Six and sixty cents, payroll liabilities for four eleven and four twenty six nineteen in the amount of six hundred thirty two thousand three hundred eighty dollars and twenty eight cents, for a total of eight hundred seventy one thousand five hundred fifty one dollars and thirty four cents.
I would second that motion.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, any discussion on it?
Looked good.
Questions or anything? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
I vote aye, motion passes. Any other business?
I have none, your honor.
I have none, your honor.
Okay, then we'll adjourn at six forty six P M.
Seventeen, two thousand nineteen, regular meeting of the Riverton City Council to order at seven o'clock. The, would council member Larson lead us in the pledge of allegiance, and council member Rota will give us the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for today, we ask you to give us your wisdom and guidance in working through tonight's session, we thank you for your many blessings and our daily breads, and we hope that you can lead us to make the best decisions possible in leading Riverton forward tonight, amen.
Would the city clerk please conduct a roll call?
Yes, your honor, councilwoman Carla Borders.
Here.
Councilman Tim Hancock.
Here.
Councilman Kyle Larson.
Here.
Councilman Corey Rota.
Present.
Mayor Richard Gard.
Here. The chair would entertain a motion to excuse council members Bailey and Schotze from tonight's meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Councilmember Larson has the motion, and the second by councilman Hancock. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 All opposed say nay. Motion passes. I declare quorum present. Um, the chair would entertain a motion for the approval of the agenda as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Councilmember Borders has made the motion, and the second by councilmember Rota. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 All opposed say nay. Motion passes. At this time, is our communication from the floor, anyone in the audience wishing to address the council regarding these items, regarding items that are already on the agenda, will be given the opportunity to speak later, I would ask those individuals who wish to address the council at this time to approach the podium and identify yourself for the record.
Mr. Mayor, my name is Bruce Camminga, owner of Specialty Marine, just wanted to tell you that the, uh, the ordinances for open containers and stuff is working, especially behind my shop.
Thank you.
They, uh, yeah, it's very appreciated, so.
Your sir, where is your shop?
The old glass shop across from A.D. Martin, on Rotary Park, and, uh, they, I mean, they still frequent the place, but, you know, they sit down, they talk for a little while, and then they go, and it, it's been a marked improvement.
But they're not using your area down there as a...
Well, they gotta climb the fence, no.
Ah.
So, yeah, just watching the, the traffic continues to move instead of them sitting there all day, sleeping all day, drinking all day.
Thanks, Bruce, we appreciate it. Anyone else?
I'm Bruce Berg, I live on Gannett, and I'm just here to thank you for the, the work that was done, um, the road is much, much better, the, even with the hiccups that they had along the way, it's, it's looking pretty good, and, uh, I just, for the people that live there, thanks, it went, you know, everything went pretty smooth, wanted to thank the, the council and the force committee, they put up the money for that, and the road repair seems to be working, so, thanks.
Thank you, Bruce, we appreciate it, appreciate it a lot.
Mr. Mayor, ladies and gentlemen of the council, um, my name is Daniel Burquist, and, um, ever since I've joined the Riverton community a few years ago, I've heard much discussion about economic diversity and fight of our young workers to larger cities where jobs are, um, and the need to expand our work, our, our job options here in town. What I haven't heard is something that, uh, councilman Hancock suggested I come and, uh, present to you guys, um, at this time, and the reality is, there is actually a fantastic number of jobs available to everyone in Riverton at this time. I took five minutes earlier today to see if I could find as many jobs as I possibly could here in Riverton, and this number's gonna shock you, I found twenty seven thousand jobs available to the people of Riverton right now. You're probably wondering, where on the earth is he finding such a astounding number, such an unbelievable number? There can't be that many open jobs in this state, much less the city, is maybe what you're thinking. The answer is something I've been doing for the last several years, remote working, and it's also known as telecommuting, and this is a work arrangement where where you live has nothing to do with your, with your job. Remote focused companies don't require workers to come into the office on a regular basis, but employees can pick where they live and where they work, be it at home, another state, or even while traveling. This work arrangement is a part of a growing trend, uh, of both support from companies and demand from workers, companies such as Apple, American Express, The New York Times, Cisco, and Hilton have all been known to support remote roles. People whose careers are in varied fields such as teaching, writing, tech, legal, design, medicine, and many others, have all worked remotely. I've personally encountered people from frontline customer support all the way up to CEOs who work in a remote setting. When someone works remotely for a company outside of the state, every single cent of their income they make is not only adding to our local economy, but also the state economy. Now, what needs to be done to support remote working in our community? The biggest hurdle is informing our high school and college students and workers who are looking, uh, for work at this time, they need to know that they can expand their search beyond, uh, our city limits without having to leave them. They can't apply to jobs of which they are not aware of. How can we push this information out to the community? Riverton has many attractive traits, wide open spaces, access to beautiful scenery, plentiful housing, and no income tax, to name a few. With these twenty seven thousand jobs, we could employ the current workforce of our community several times over, truly, there is a remarkable opportunity in our town, thank you.
Hey, Daniel, is there's any other positive things that we could do, could we post those onto our website? You have some suggestions there?
Yeah, I mean, you can post information on the website as to where to find these jobs, I've got a giant list that I've been working off of and my own job search at this time, um, also, access to reliable, um, fast and affordable internet access is also very important, some jobs you can get, you can do these on what charter offers, others, they have so much data that they're moving around that they need, uh, gigabit fiber.
Okay, so, that's really what Riverton needs, you're right on the money, we need jobs, and so, if we could get that out there to people that are in town and, and maybe not unemployed, maybe underemployed.
Yes.
Um, that would really help us, wouldn't it?
Yes.
Plus, if we could get those, those qualities that you mentioned about, uh, no income tax, wide open spaces, um, quality of life, and have some people relocate to Riverton, would be very beneficial to us.
Yes, and, um, I know Governor Mead, uh, when he was in office, uh, would mention that if you have a eighteen year old working in Wyoming today, there's a sixty percent chance that in ten years they would not be working in the state, and a large part of that, of, as you're probably aware, is the employment situation, and if we can keep more of our people here at home, that will also help.
Super. Um, we do have a pretty good website, the city runs, you guys do an excellent job with that, maybe we could get with you and, and post some of those opportunities so people could find them, and, you know, just if nothing else enlighten their minds, twenty seven thousand is a staggering amount of jobs, and I would imagine that they're fairly good paying jobs.
Oftentimes, yes.
They're not looking for somebody to flip hamburgers, I wouldn't think.
Mm-hmm.
So, yeah, well, I appreciate that information, and if we can assist you, or if you can get us some information, we'd, we'd love to hear from you, okay?
Excellent.
Thanks, Daniel, appreciate you coming in.
Thank you.
I thought Ernie was gonna come tell us something, is there anybody else? Jim?
No, I, I'm on the...
Okay. Seeing no others, we'll proceed. Would the city clerk please read the consent agenda items by title only?
Yes, your honor, approval of the minutes, April sixteenth, two thousand nineteen, regular council meeting, approval of the minutes, April sixteenth, two thousand nineteen, executive session, approval of the minutes, May seventh, two thousand nineteen, finance committee meeting, approval of the finance committee recommendations for May seventh, two thousand nineteen, approval of the municipal court report for the month of April, two thousand nineteen, and open container permit application received by the Riverton Chamber of Commerce for an Alive at Five event on May twenty fourth, two thousand nineteen, at City Park from four P M. to nine P M., and open container permit application received by Riverton Lions Club for a picnic on June third, two thousand nineteen, at Sunset Park from five P M. to nine P M., and an open container permit application received by Paws for Life Animal League for a crawfish boil fundraiser on June twenty second, two thousand nineteen, at Sunset Park from three P M. to six P M., and the reappointment of Ryan Preston to the Wind River Visitors Council.
Thank you, appreciate that. I see that Ryan's in the audience, and we appreciate your service, and, uh, look forward to, to many wonderful things that you can help us with, okay? Is there any further items require, or is there any items requiring further discussion?
Your honor, the finance committee recommendations are for consideration of claims to be paid in the amount of one hundred and sixty seven thousand five hundred and nine dollars and forty six cents, manual check in the amount of sixty two thousand six hundred and sixty one dollars and sixty cents, payroll liabilities for April eleventh, two thousand and nineteen, and April twenty sixth, two thousand and nineteen, in the amount of six hundred and thirty two thousand three hundred and eighty dollars and twenty eight cents, for a total of eight hundred and seventy one thousand five hundred and fifty one dollars and thirty four cents.
Thank you. The chair would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Councilmember Rota made the motion, and the second by councilmember Borders, any discussion?
Your honor.
Tim.
Um, I guess I, you know, we had a long discussion with the whole idea of having, um, open container permit applications in City Park, and I think this is something we had, very divided council on last time, mayor actually had to, had to, um, break a tie there, um, but I will say, as far as I've heard, they've gone well, they've had a couple of them, I don't think we had any...
We didn't have any last year because of the construction.
That's right, we didn't have any last year, but we did two years ago, and, um, a little bit of a change, but I guess the reality is, it, my only concern is, is the only people that have been asking for them and have gotten them is the Chamber of Commerce, um, it's not really as much of a concern, but I guess, if we're gonna be doing it for the chamber, we ought to be willing to do it for others who are coming and are interested in doing it as well, is my point. I support it, uh, with some hesitation, uh, I was against it before, um, but the reason I do, I guess, is because I think as much as we can make use of City Park, we wanna make use of City Park.
Kyle.
Um, uh, when you say the, um, Chamber of Commerce is the only, um, requesting party, we haven't done any selective, have we? We would allow whomever to request a permit, an open container permit, so, just to say that they're the only ones, they're the only consistent ones, so...
They're the only real lushes in the room, is what you're trying to say?
Yeah.
Well, and it's been the longstanding policy of the council not to do that, the, what, what led to that change was two years ago, and I think generally speaking, even when it comes to the permitting process, city staff has been told, we're not going to just immediately let you go through this permitting process without coming to the council first and getting the okay, if, if I'm right about that.
Your honor.
Yes.
That is accurate, there is a resolution on the books that has, um, allowed only alcohol in Sunset Park, and has directed staff to be able to, um, turn people away when they request alcohol in City Park or J.C. Park.
And so, I was part of a discussion that I think is kind of interesting from the police chief, he's not here tonight, so I can talk about him, um, he was a little bit puzzled that we're having a, an activity to, um, celebrate the splash pad for young children, and then we're gonna come across the park someplace and put in a place that we sell liquor, and, um, he just saw a double standard to that, and...
Sell liquor or sell beer?
So, excuse me, you're correct, to have a, to, to, and very well done, I might add, um, my, my mother must be calling, excuse me.
Must be long.
I must've got off script there for a minute, but, um, what the chief was trying to point out was that he would, he did, he saw the conflict between young children in the park and, and beer sales, and he was wondering, if at all possible, not always, but would it be possible for just this event to not approve alcohol in the park for the chamber? Now, Tony spoke very eloquently about, you know, that it draws and, and brings people to the park, and that's what we want to do, we want to use the park, but this might be one of those items that, that we just say, you know, maybe not for this one, and so...
Your honor.
Yeah.
If I'm not mistaken, maybe Mr. Davis can confirm this, but I think that the alcohol was to be consumed in a confined area, and only two beers were gonna be allowed, is that correct?
That was what we did the last time, was, 'cause, yeah, confined area, now, we're gonna have to look at that long and hard because the fence is gone, but we've looked at the park and we think we can put some safety fence up away from the ban shelf, on maybe the west side, 'cause the food's probably gonna be along the street there, and get it away, ways away from the splash pad, and we're gonna put some bouncy houses up in the park too, so, um, and we're gonna limit it, you know, so that if they can sit there and listen to the music and enjoy a, a beverage, um, uh, we had it very well under control the last time, and I don't anticipate we're not gonna do it the same way, you know.
And everyone's tips trained, that's, that's serving.
Yep.
How, uh, Mr. Mayor, excuse me, how do you control them to know that it's only two a person, you give them tickets or something they turn in?
Yeah, they have to buy two tickets.
Okay.
First.
And then they would turn those in for their beverage?
Turn them in for the beverage, and they don't get a second chance at buying tickets.
Your honor, maybe what we should do is split this out, just finish up the rest of consent, and maybe discuss it separately if we're gonna...
If I may, real quick, one of the things that in our last chamber board meeting that Rebecca specifically talked about, and she actually sits on the splash pad committee as well, and, you know, she's never had any objections to anything that we've talked about, she's been in full support of, of what we're trying to do, but we actually talked about instituting a wristband, so instead of doing tickets, get everything on a wristband, and then either stamp it or, or...
Pull a punch. Ryan, would you state your name for those that don't know who, know who you are?
Ryan Preston.
Thanks, Ryan. Um, I think this is a good solution to move this, um, Kristen, is it all right if we, if we move this to later discussion?
Yes.
So how do we do that? Do we just remove it from consent?
Yep, somebody would need to make a motion to remove it from the consent agenda.
Okay, I would stand for a motion.
Move we, uh, remove the item regarding the open permit, open container permit application for the Chamber of Commerce to, uh, be its own item in the agenda, your honor.
One second.
We have a motion by, uh, councilman Hancock, and a second by councilwoman Borders. We, can we amend the agenda at this point?
Your honor, I believe that it, with the removal of it, it'll go immediately after, so it'll become the new nine.
Okay, thank you. So, let's go back to where we are, the chair would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented, with the exception of the, the, um, chambers' request for an open container for, um, City Park, which is five alive for May, for the fifth of May.
Your honor, just as a point of order, we had already had a motion and a second, we were at discussion, amended it, I think we just need to call for the question.
Okay, so, we are right there, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. So now, let's go back and, um, the chair would entertain a motion for discussion on the, um, liquor permit for the Riverton Chamber of Commerce, um, alive at five, uh, the fifth of May.
Actually, it's the twenty fourth of May.
Oh, thank you, it is, okay, twenty fourth of May, two thousand nineteen, City Park from four to nine. Do we have that motion? Do we need a motion? We do, we need the motion.
Yes, your honor.
A point of, point of clarification, um, what do we need the motion for?
To approve it.
To approve, though.
Oh, we're talking approve, I didn't know if we're talking about, talking about it again.
We, we need a motion to have further discussion on the item.
I'll move that we do further discussion.
Okay.
Second.
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 We have a motion by councilwoman Borders, and a second by councilmember Rota.
And I think, your honor, in order to actually get discussion on it, we'd have to have a motion on the, we'd have to have a motion for the approval of the open container permit application, and then we could discuss it as a part of that.
Okay, so, are you willing to make that a motion, your motion?
Let's amend my original motion.
Okay.
Um, to...
Approve it.
To approve.
The permit.
Application for the permit.
Your second stands.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Now, you guys are messing up the script, so...
[laughing]
So, here we, here we go. Um, so further discussion, um, and, and any, any discussion?
Um, Mr. Mayor, I would just say, I, the, being in favor of it myself, I think that it's important that, not that we have alcohol there, but that children are able to see how you are able to responsibly handle alcohol, um, I know when I take my kids to the zoo, you can buy beer there now, um, just about anywhere you go, so, I, I understand the concern, but I do also think it's, uh, important that we demonstrate responsible usage of beer, uh, when, when possible, so, I, I personally don't think it should be a big problem, as I stated, many places you can go, you can generally get a beer at, you do the same thing at the Derby, and, uh, a lot of the fair events as well, so...
Thank you. Tim.
And when I was discussing this earlier, your honor, you know, I had envisioned what we had done before, where we had it fenced, which is different than what we would be doing here, so that concerns me a little bit, um, it is different than we had done it before, where it was easy to have it fenced there, the other thing that's different here is we are talking about this being specifically for the splash pad grand opening, which, when I was discussing, I had forgotten that that's what we had discussed, this was where it was gonna be, what are the plans to...
I envision, I, I've got access to some of that orange eight safety fence, I envision a cordoning off an area west of the ban shelf, and that'll be further away from the splash pad, it will have to be a little bit in front of the ban shelf so that people can sit in there and, and watch the music and listen to the music, that I envision that it will be cordoned off, it will not be wide open to the park, um, and so, one way or another, we'll get it cordoned off, and, uh, keep it under control, and people cannot leave that area with a beverage. and people cannot leave that area with a beverage.
In talking about the fences and how the fence is now gone, it is a little bit across the park, but that tennis court is still fenced in over there as well. I don't know if there is a gate to enter it on the north side, it might only be the south, which would cause an inconvenience, but...
It's quite a ways away from where...
That kinda defeats the...
I, I kinda, I kinda envision that the food, and I don't know how many food booths we've got committed at this point, but I've, you know, the last time, we've, we set the food up right on the street, uh, because we're not gonna wanna take anything into that park that's gonna break sprinkler systems and that kinda stuff, you know? And so, I envision that it'll be adjacent to where the food will be served, to a certain degree.
So you're thinking the food will be kind of on the opposite end of the band shelf there, near the band shelf?
On Fremont Street?
Or against the east a little bit, or to the west a little bit.
And you're thinking that the cordoned off area will be, I mean, are you talking directly west of the band shelf, just...
Well, it's gonna have to be a little bit out in the front, you know, so that the, you know, dispensing the beer isn't the problem, it's the people that are consuming it that wanna listen and watch to the band, so.
Right, which is why the, the tennis courts don't work, 'cause way down...
Yeah, it's too far away, and then, you know, we got some comments, uh, last time, and it was cordoned off, there's no doubt, but you were sitting on the concrete, and it was hot, and, you know, we did put some, you know, shade up, and that worked to a certain degree, but, um, and it did fine, I mean, it, it controlled it, and, but it's just a different situation now, and we'll have to, to adjust what we're doing to, to meet the requirements.
You'll have some seating there, you'll be under the trees, it's not gonna be like it was before.
There's plenty of trees, you could wrap some, you, you...
Well, and I think, yeah, we'll probably get some T-posts and put in there and attach, you know, to the T-posts, uh, um, the, the safety fence.
I, I just can't disagree with the chief saying, it seems a little bit strange to be doing this at the grand opening for the splash pad, which is somewhere where we don't want to be having liquor there and everything, and serving alcohol there.
Kyle, is there any problems with T-posts in the park?
Your honor, no, I think we just need to work together as far as the location, so that, uh, when the T-posts are driven, they don't go through infrastructure.
Your honor, as part of our permit, it actually, while we approved the catering permit in-house, um, that the location that is required as part of that approval, uh, should address exactly what, uh, Kyle is talking about, that location, and, uh, we can, with direction, we can help, uh, set those parameters, if that's your choice.
You know, we've invested a lot of time and effort, and the chief has bought in, and, and his, his captains, his sergeants, his patrolmen are working the park, and the park looks good.
It does, it really does.
And, and I wanna commend them for their efforts. I don't wanna, I don't want to put anyone that would like to drink a beer in the leper colony over on the other side of the park. And, and so, I understand his, his idea that it's a two-standard, um, arrangement. So, I think what we really need to have said is, we are conscious of the fact that we're working really hard to make the park not a place to go and drink. By ordinance, we've set up Sunset Park to be the, the place that you can apply for a permit. We've made exceptions, and I think we need to, we need to have those exceptions, um, to use City Park. I think there's, there's really good reasons to allow people to come and, and enjoy the beverage that they would like to drink in moderation.
And I think as long as we do it responsibly, you know, you always have that, uh, possibility, and as far as other groups maybe wanting to do that, you know, we kinda was a concern about that when we first talked about this, uh, a couple of years ago, that we were opening the door, but at this point, that hasn't happened, but if it does happen, we just have to give them notice that they need to do it responsibly, and there are these certain, uh, requirements that we're gonna put on you to do it there, and if it gets out of hand, you'll never do it again, you know?
Well, the other thing that comes to mind here is, if I am reading this correctly, it is a four to nine o'clock event. And so, is there any possibility that we could limit sales of liquor to after six? The kids may be gone?
Yeah, I don't, I don't think the band is gonna even start playing until seven.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, I think the band is here around six to be set up, and they're there, but I don't think they start playing until right around six thirty, seven o'clock.
Yeah, the music's actually gonna be from about seven to nine, so.
Kyle?
I'm confused, are we selling malt liquor? Are we selling liquor? Are we just, what are we...
Selling beer.
Just beer, just beer.
Beer, oh, you keep on talking about liquor, and I'm, you know, I'm wondering if you're setting up a bar there.
No, just beer.
Just beer, okay.
Thanks, Kyle, you're a lot of help. What, what we really, what we really wanna do is understand what the, what the police chief is trying to get across, is that we've put a great effort into clearing the park.
And don't get me wrong, your honor, I was part of that effort twenty years ago when we banned it in City Park. So I'm not looking at it from totally a, a citizen's standpoint, because I spent twelve years right up there, and, and was extremely concerned about continuing the problem, and what could we do to, to get it under control, and it's, it's, it's way, way better than it has been in the past, and it's just a continuing thing that we need to keep after and not let it get out of control again.
That's right.
I don't think this is something that'll happen, because if you do it responsibly, just like Councilman Rhoda said, you know, um, it's something that, yeah, you don't necessarily wanna keep it from your kids, but you don't want them to see the bad side of it either, you know, and that can happen anywhere, that can happen anywhere in town, you know, and...
Well, last I checked, it's legal to drink beer in City Park if you get a permit. And so, I'm not against that, but I was just felt it was, I was impressed with the chief's thought process to say, why are we doing this? And so I thought we should have that...
And, and we need to have that discussion, there's no doubt.
And, and I think even with that discussion, even if we permit that to happen, it's really good for those people who come and participate to understand that there's, they're setting an example.
Right.
And, and the way we use the park is, is what makes it possible for that to, to be of...
I fully agree.
For the use.
I fully agree.
And, and I really don't think we wanna establish a, a dry situation.
It doesn't work.
Yeah, I don't, that's...
It didn't work back in the twenties when the feds did it, it's not gonna work now.
What time is the splash pad opening and closing on this grand opening? That this has a conflict with?
This is...
Is it gonna be at nine o'clock at night?
Well, that's, that was my point, was that most kids are, at least my children, would be in bed before then. So, um, on, on the permit, it's from four o'clock to nine o'clock. So I don't think, to be real truthful, this early in the year, the splash pad is gonna be raucous at nine o'clock at night, I could be wrong.
It's gonna be a little chilly at four.
It's gonna be chilly at four, yeah.
Hopefully it'll be warm.
Yeah.
But, I don't know if there is a conflict...
We're not, I don't, I don't envision us starting to serve beer at four o'clock. I mean, you know, we put it at four o'clock because that was basically setup time and tried to get things set up and what have you. I envision that we'll start selling beer maybe a half an hour before the band starts, or, you know, but...
Your estimation?
Just took a timeframe to say, well, this is, it'll be within this timeframe.
Okay.
So about six o'clock, you're thinking?
I would think in probably, you know, first of all, you know, people are not, I mean, the people that are working, are working till five or five-thirty, uh, that was always the thing when we did the one two years ago, um, people don't start showing up, you know, because if they're gonna stop on their way home, um, you know, it doesn't really get underway until six, five-thirty, six o'clock, you know? Same thing with our business after our socials, you know? People get off at five, and if they stop on their way home, you know, it's usually over, I mean, it says it's from five to seven, but it's usually over by six-thirty, because by the time they have come, had a little socialization with people, they're ready to go home, you know, so. And of course, this is on a Friday, so that may not be quite the, the same timeframe, but, uh, it's gonna be over at nine, so.
Thanks, Jim, we appreciate your input. We have the motion, we have the second. I would, uh, call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye, five-four, any opposed? Motion passes.
Reservations? Do we have any reservations? Jim said if there was a problem, then never have it again, I'm, I don't know if we wanna be, you know, life sentence for making a mistake, but we can certainly learn by our mistakes.
So we...
If, if something happens.
So we just chop off hands, or what?
Arms.
Arms. I, I really don't think that we'll have a problem, and especially with the people that are in charge, I, I don't anticipate that. I just felt like it was a good point to put forward that the chief is working day and night, and his guys are doing a great job.
You gotta respect his point too, you know, and it needed to be discussed, and that's fine.
And he didn't necessarily want to stop them altogether. What he was wanting to do is just this one be separate, and then I think, I think the, the evening activities for adults and adult beverages are, are appropriate, and, you know, no one, no one tells me not to drink Dr. Pepper except my wife. And so, um, short of that, I think that's where we're at, and, and I think you guys will do a wonderful job, you have in the past, I don't think there's gonna be a problem. And so, as far as we are now, we have a, the motion passed, and we can move on.
Thank you.
Thank you. Kristen, did we cover all the bases?
Yes, your honor.
Thank you. Nine is now ten. Anybody's got their scorecard? Fuel service contract award, public works director, report, please.
Thank you, your honor. Uh, the city of Riverton previously had a contract with Bailey Enterprises to provide fuel for our rolling stock. The contract actually expired yesterday. The original contract was a two-year contract with two one-year optional renewal periods. We exercised as a city both of those optional periods, and it was time to bid and, um, secure a new contract for fuel services. The city of Riverton advertised the gasoline and diesel fuel, um, contract on April seventh, seventeenth, and twenty-first. This project, and, and really the services contained in the RFP Center on fueling up at a, um, private provider's, uh, business location. So, for example, previously, we would fuel our vehicles at Bailey's. We, uh, have in there the option to purchase diesel fuel at their pumps, but for the most part, we purchase diesel in bulk. This is just a backup if we couldn't have anything, uh, at our yard at a time of need. After the advertising period, bids were publicly opened on April twenty-ninth, only one bid was received, and it was from Bailey's Enterprises. And the way that this is meant to be awarded is by line item, which includes the bidder's cost at the time of the bid opening, and that's the rack cost that they get from their supplier. The rack price that Bailey's supplied is from Sinclair, Wyoming, and then it adds the, um, markup for the bidder. The markup includes the profit margin and the taxes associated with providing fuel sales. So when we combine both the bidder's cost and their markup, um, we have a cost per gallon for unleaded gasoline at two dollars thirty-nine, thirty-nine cents and basically seven tenths. For diesel number one, uh, we have a total cost per gallon at three dollars and twenty-six cents, and diesel number two at two dollars eighty-nine cents and six tenths, um, if we take it to a tenth. Staff has reviewed the submittal by Bailey's Enterprises. It is responsive to our bid documents and the needs of the city. We therefore recommend that the city council approve the bid award to Bailey's for the gasoline and diesel fuel contract. The budget impact related to this is that for a minimum of one year, we will be tied to the prices supplied by Bailey's. This contract includes two one-year renewal periods, and that has to be agreed upon in advance, um, prior to exercising that, and I'll stand for any questions.
The chair would entertain a motion to award Bailey Enterprises' incorporation the gasoline and diesel fuel service contract.
Your honor, we move to, uh, award gasoline and diesel fuel bid award to Bailey Enterprises.
Thank you.
One second.
We have a motion by Councilman Larson and a, and a second by Councilmember Borders. Any further discussion?
Your honor?
Yes.
Kyle, does, does that still allow the credit cards to be used at Bailey's that he's had, he's set up?
Your honor, councilman, that is correct. So this, uh, contract includes providing fuel cards for every vehicle in the city of Riverton.
Okay, so it's, it's, it's an extension of what we have had in the past, only with new numbers on the fuel price?
Your honor, that is correct.
And, and for further clarification, as gas goes up and down, that price will vary, it will not hold at this point that Kyle spoke of, it will maintain the price markup over and above the cost, correct?
Your honor, that is correct, and, uh, with the contract, we will execute with Bailey's. They have a duty to supply us information on a weekly basis for their rack price, um, and the markup, um, or their profit and the taxes will, will remain constant, but the cost of fuel will fluctuate.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion passes. The third quarter fiscal health report, would the finance director report, please?
Your honor, good evening, mayor and council. Hard to believe we're already in the fourth quarter of the fiscal year. We closed out their quarter on March thirty-first, and I just wanted to provide the results of where we stand, uh, within our budget for this, uh, period of July one, twenty-eighteen through March thirty-first. Uh, this fiscal year, the governing body, um, approved a budget totaling twenty-six million, four hundred and eighty-nine thousand, two hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars. I provided information to you, uh, in your packets as far as the breakdown of the budget specific to each fund, and I hope you all had a chance to take a look at it. Um, I'm just going to, uh, briefly go through some of this for, uh, the members of our viewing audience and the individuals that are in the council chambers this evening. Uh, the general fund is the primary operating fund of the city, and it's used to account for the revenues and expenditures of most tax-supported activities of the city. It makes up forty-two percent of the twenty-nine million dollar budget, and I apologize for that, my first slide said the twenty-six million, but we did do a budget amendment, amending that to twenty-nine, um, I just cut that, so. Uh, the amounts referenced on the slides presented do include both the operational and capital revenues and expenditures, as well as budget transfers, uh, that were budgeted in, um, the approval process. At the close of the quarter, revenues exceeded expenditures in the general fund by four hundred and forty-six thousand, three hundred and, or six hundred and thirty-three dollars. Um, the council did approve budget transfers from this fund of two hundred and fifteen thousand, nine hundred and eighty-six dollars for air service, so that is to support, uh, air service in Fremont County, twenty-four thousand dollars for economic development, and two hundred and eighty-four thousand, six oh six, to the airport fund to support both operating and capital expenditures. Uh, the transfers have been made in the air service fund and in the economic development fund, uh, we have not made transfers to the airport fund as of yet. Now, when you're looking through your packet, as I did to you last quarter, I slid the airport fund slide into the second slide, um, that I'll be presenting next, so you may have to flip through your packet just slightly to find the airport fund. So at the close of the quarter, the airport fund was running at a deficit of three hundred and forty-six thousand, seven hundred and twenty-nine dollars, this is exclusive of the air service revenues also. Um, however, funds have been expect, expended this quarter for the airport apron reconstruction project, and there is an outstanding grant reimbursement of sixty-five thousand, twenty dollars, uh, that we are awaiting to help offset some of those expenses. Therefore, the difference after the grant reimbursement reflects a shortfall of two hundred and eighty-one thousand, seven hundred and nine dollars in the airport fund. So you'll wanna keep in mind that during the budget process, the council approved a transfer of two hundred and eighty-four thousand, six oh six from the general fund. So we're running a shortfall of two hundred and eighty-one, and our projected transfer was two eighty-four, so, pretty close budgeting. Uh, we also budgeted that we were going to transfer two hundred and thirty thousand dollars from passenger facility charge revenues that we're holding in cash right now, um, and we get that money from, uh, cash that the city has expended over prior airport projects, and we're allowed to use that money by regulation to help offset the costs, um, to support further capital projects. Uh, the transfers have not been made as of yet, and because we are running so close to what our projected transfer would be, to what we are actually looking at right now, it's our hope that we won't have to transfer either all... it's our hope that we won't have to transfer either all or as much of the money that we budgeted from PFC revenues, so hopefully, we can carry that over into next year's budget and utilize some of that to support future projects. We will not have that amount until we get closer to the end of the fiscal year. And then, once we do, hopefully, we'll be able to save some money. The next slide that you'll see is the water fund. The total budget for the water fund is $3,982,983. Year-to-date, revenues are exceeding our expenditures by $579,603. Again, this looks like a lot. We need to bear in mind that $192,000 of that money is grant and loan reimbursements for the North Federal Project that we expended last fiscal year. So we experienced the expense last year, and we just received the revenues for it this fiscal year. So it started us out a little bit ahead. Additionally, we saw a 2% increase in our water receipts this year, which is right in line with what the council approved rate increase that we saw last spring. Again, this particular funding includes capital projects, and we will be receiving additional invoices from YDOT now with the kickoff of the YDOT reconstruction project again this spring. So that will close the gap a little bit on some of that large difference that you're seeing in the water fund at this time. The next slide includes the wastewater fund. The total budget for the wastewater fund is $2481,787, and our revenues are outpacing our expenses by $213,326 in this fund. Again, the water and the wastewater fund are very similar in regards to the revenues that we've received from expenditures from prior year, as well as that we will incur additional project expenses due to the North Federal Project as well. It'll be great when we get that wrapped up. The sanitation fund, the total projected budget for this fund is $2452,732. This quarter, our revenues are outpacing our expenditures by $279,425. This year, as far as our capital expenditures go, the staff did budget for the purchase of a new sanitation truck. The purchasing contract for this truck has been bid and awarded. However, due to the late timing, the truck is actually not going to be purchased until later on this year. So subsequently, we've still got that $300,000 sitting in our budget. We will have to plan for that in next year's budget and pay for it as well. So interestingly enough, if we consider that, then, looking at our total bottom line, we are up $279,000, but we did not spend an anticipated $300,000. So actually, had we purchased that truck, we would be requiring a transfer of cash of about $21,000 to cover that. The next slide that we have is the air service fund, and it is primarily funded by the city of Riverton, Fremont County, and the city of Lander, as well as some other entities. The city receives reimbursement from the state of Wyoming Air Service Enhancement Program to help fund this, and we receive 60% reimbursement from the state for the funding of the expenses that are incurred due to the air service. At the close of the quarter, the air service fund did have a positive balance of $262,503. It was during the mid-year budget amendment this year that the council did approve a transfer of $65,986 in additional funding to support our service, and these figures were also closely matched by Fremont County and the city of Lander. So while you see that we have $262,000, we have budgeted our dollars very tight in this fund. We continue to pay weekly invoices on those, and the last few weeks have been running anywhere from about $30,000 to $32,000 per week on that fund. So that is basically a brief synopsis of where we stand as far as our budget. And on behalf of the Finance Department, I would like to extend our thanks to each of you for your help and support in helping us keep our budget balanced this year, as well as Tony Tolstead and all the department heads within the city. Our staff does an amazing job with trying to stay within their budgets, and they make some tremendous sacrifices, and we just really couldn't do it without everybody's support in this. And I would stand for any questions.
Mia?
Yes.
If I'm reading this right, we are at 53% of what we were anticipating we would have had our revenues be at this point. Is that accurate, then?
Are you in the general fund?
Yes, yeah.
That is correct.
Revenues.
That is correct. We are at 53% of our revenues, but we're also at 50% of our expenses. And part of that is because when we're trying to budget for capital projects, we're not exactly sure at what point we are going to be throughout the year. So we budget both revenues and expenses evenly. And so, yes, while our revenues are down, our expenditures are also down.
Which has meant that a lot of departments have been having to tighten their belts with the unexpected lack of funding. I mean, we're going into the year thinking we're going to have $908,100,000 at this point in revenues, and that's just local revenues.
That's just-
Not licenses and permittings.
That is correct.
But, and all of a sudden, we're saying, wait, we're only at $651,995.81. So I guess my point is, our city staff has been really doing well at keeping with the budget. So I just wanted to say thank you to everybody for recognizing the unexpected lack of funds and working with it.
Councilman, also, a lot of the revenues come in at different times during the year. Some of our revenues, we receive annually, just once a year. Some of them are monthly, quarterly, and semi-annually. So even though it looks like it's down a little bit right now, we will be receiving some additional revenues coming in in April, May, and June. But you are absolutely correct. Our staff really, really watches our money very closely. Our money, the citizens' money.
Any other questions? Mia, good job.
Thank you very much.
We appreciate what you do. Bid award for the airport seal coat and marking, Public Works Directors report, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. This project is one that we have had in our capital plan and also in the state's Wyoming capital plan as well, what we call the WASSIP. This project was unique in the sense that we didn't bid it out ourselves. We were able to partner with the state of Wyoming, who put together all the bid documents and bundled a bunch of these seal coat and marking projects together across the entire state so that we could realize an economy of scale of sort in the bid prices. So the state of Wyoming put together the bid package and advertised the seal coat and marking project. They worked closely with the city staff and our engineering consultant, JAviation. The bid proposals were received and publicly opened on April 9th, 2019 by the state of Wyoming, and it included one schedule and multiple alternates. The alternates pertain to each airport that was participating in the bulk bid. We did have some alternates to consider, but not all of them, because not all of them met the needs of Riverton Regional. That being said, for Schedule I, the engineer's estimate was $448,762.88 for Riverton's portion of this bulk bid. Three bidders responded. It was Straight Stripe, Maxwell Asphalt, and American Road. And the prices respectively for those contractors were $420,735.25, $461,450, and $460,827.75. Staff, YDOT, and JAviation have reviewed the bid proposals to ensure they were responsive not just to state specs, but also to the needs of the city of Riverton and Riverton Regional Airport. In reviewing the bid alternates, staff elected and gave approval for one alternate, and that was swapping out waterborne paint for some of our markings with a product called methyl methacrylate. We'll say MMA from here on out. This is an additive to paint that allows it to last longer. Several years ago, about two years ago, we utilized this MMA product as a test, and it has proved to weather very well. The benefit to adding it to this bid is that we feel that over time, we will save money in the waterborne paint. The FAA comes and inspects our paint condition on the runway every single year, and if it is too faded, they can deem our runway unsafe for general aviation and commercial aviation. The thing to also consider is, as revenues are tight across the state and locally, we felt that now was a good time to invest in this better product for our hold signs so that we wouldn't have to expend more in later years to refresh the waterborne paint. So by adding this alternate, we increased the Schedule I base bid by $15,675. The majority of this project is funded at a 90-10 split with the state of Wyoming, and I do apologize, in your staff report, I put it at 80-20, but it is a 90-10 split, so I appreciate your patience on that. From a budget impact, we have included this project in the proposed budget for fiscal year 20. State funds that will support this project are $378,659.3. Local funds required to participate in this project are $57,748.23. This seal coat project will cover the entire airfield, except for the new general aviation apron that we paved last year. So all of our taxiways, both of our runways, the commercial apron, and half of the general aviation apron will receive a seal coat, and then the markings will be updated. After reviewing these bids, staff proposes that the city council awards Straight Stripe the contract for the seal coat and marking project in the amount of $436,407.25. I'll stand for any questions.
The Chair would entertain a motion to award the airport seal coat and marking project to Straight Stripe in the amount of $436,407.25.
So moved.
Councilmember Rota with the motion, and second by Councilmember Borders. Any discussion? Tim?
Mr. Butterfield, I guess I was just looking up MMA, and it looks like it's even used as a grout by orthopedic surgeons to make the bone inserts fit into bone. Lifespan of methyl methacrylate as bronchocement is 20 years before revision surgery is allowed.
We may have to take your internet access away.
My point, I guess, is, I mean, this seems like it could significantly add to the life that we're going to have in striping.
Your Honor, we believe so as well. If we would go with the waterborne paint, it would be $14,000, just for these hold signs. Paint's expensive, and if we have to refresh that in a year, that's another $14,000. The following year, another $14,000. But if we can get five years out of this, I think we're saving money.
And I guess the other thing I was... Are any of the other... I mean, because this was something where we joined in with other airports and everything. Are any of the others doing anything like this that you're aware of? Are we kind of trendsetters, I guess, in trying to use bone grout?
Your Honor, I can't speak to what the other airports have opted in for their optional bids, but I can proudly say that we are trendsetters, because when we went through this process a couple of years ago, we had to beg and plead the state of Wyoming to allow us to do it. And I can't take credit for this. JAviation needs to take credit. They did a good job proposing it. Once we did it, Laramie wanted to do it as well. So I think it's safe to say we're trendsetters.
All right.
Our whole airport is trendsetting for the state of Wyoming, and we do a wonderful job there. And Kyle is lead on that. He's gracious to put it off on the engineers. But my only question, do our plows bother this process?
Your Honor, we haven't seen that thus far on our Aries. We did on the crosswind.
You know, where we see it on the highways, where we get extra buildup, and the plows come through and remove that for us. But it's not going to raise like the YDOT product does.
Your Honor, it's interesting. YDOT uses a product called thermoplastic, and that does raise a little higher. This product actually applies like a paint. In fact, when we were applying it a couple of years ago on the crosswind, it was a windy day, so we weren't too smart that day, and it was blowing away from us. And so you roll it on as if it was a paint, but there's a polymer to it, and I'm not a chemist, so I can't explain all of it, but it sets up a little bit more firmly and more pliably than just normal waterborne paint.
We'll give you a few minutes with the internet.
Okay. I was going to say, I was just looking at the chemical ingredients and everything.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion passes. Senior Center Endowment Fund presentation, with the Finance Director report, please.
Welcome back. I don't have handout materials to provide to you. Basically, the purpose of the conversation tonight is we've all had discussions or heard the term about the Senior Center Board, the Endowment Board. We have a member of our council, Councilman Hancock, that sits on the Endowment Board. And I thought it would benefit members of the city council, as well as citizens in Riverton, to get an understanding about the relationship between the city of Riverton and the senior citizens center and the Endowment Board, and how it all ties together. So what I have is just a brief synopsis. It's actually a 25-year history of the Senior Endowment Board, how it came to play, and where we stand with it today. So it was during the 1994 general election that an optional 1% capital facility sales and use tax was approved by the citizens of Fremont County for the construction, operation, and maintenance of a new building designed and intended to be used as a senior citizen and a community center. That passed, and the building was built, and it's currently located at 303 East Lincoln Avenue here in Riverton. The tax included an endowment fund, which is to be used solely for the operation and maintenance of the center. The funds were managed and maintained initially within the Fremont County government system. So now we're approaching, there's about a four-month window here where you can see that there were conversations between Fremont County and the city of Riverton as far as who was going to maintain the books and the operations and somewhat control over that aspect of the center. In December 1997, the council passed Resolution Number 800, establishing the Senior Citizen and Community Center Endowment Board to administer the endowment fund. The council appointed the board, which consisted of the Director of the Senior Citizens Center, the Chair of the Finance Committee, and the City Clerk Treasurer. In March of 1998, four months later, the Fremont County Commissioners formally entered into an agreement with the city of Riverton whereby the property, building, and improvements and the balance of the endowment funds were transferred to the city. The balance of the endowment fund at that time was $1,261,793. In October of 2008, so we're fast-forwarding approximately 10 years now, an order releasing restrictions on the endowment fund was filed in district court. The premise behind the filing was that the city and the Senior Endowment Board found that the restrictions on the endowment were inappropriate and impracticable by reason that certain unanticipated but necessary expenditures for the operation and maintenance of the center may occasionally exceed the proceeds and interest earned by the fund. So basically, what the argument was is that we needed more money operationally to keep things going. However, the court believed that the proposed order went too far and that the board can simply spend any or the entire endowment fund when deemed appropriate. Therefore, the court approved the order with modifications limiting disbursements to what is called a true emergency and unanimous of approval of the Riverton Senior Board of Directors. Such directives should also be provided to the Riverton City Council through the Endowment Board of Directors for a consenting vote. So basically, we needed to determine by the Riverton Senior Citizen Board a unanimous vote, is it a true emergency to dip into these funds? If so, the board had to approve it. It had to go through the Endowment Board, and further has to go through the Riverton City Council to release that money. The directives should also provide to the Riverton City Council through the Endowment Board of Directors for a consenting vote. And any requests made must also include a provision to repay or replace the funds in a reasonable way and timeframe. So if you were to dip into the corpus of the funds, it is required that there is a payback plan. In July of 2009, and that's based on the court decision, Resolution Number 1179 was passed by the city council rescinding Resolution Number 800. The resolution added that a member of the senior board to direct... Excuse me. The resolution added that a member of the senior citizen board also now serve on the endowment board, because remember, it was just originally the Director of the Senior Center. It also contained the language necessary to clarify the management and disbursement of the fund monies as approved by the court and established a fund corpus of $881,000. As of today, the endowment fund balance is $951,675 and accrued interest not yet paid of $9,146. The funds mainly remained liquid up until December of this last year. After much discussion with the endowment board, we felt that we could earn higher interest on the funds by putting it into some different types of investments outside of just a liquid money market fund. of just a liquid money market fund. The corpus was invested in the Wyoming Government Investment Fund with a series of CDs with latter terms and maturities, and the remaining funds are held in cash at Wells Fargo and YO Star. And also, I'm pleased to introduce some members of the senior endowment board. Of course, we have Councilman Hancock. And then back behind me, we have the executive director of the senior board, Jane Noldy, along with her husband Gary, and Frank Tanner, who is the president of the senior board. And I also saw Jerry Bash in here, she just left, but she's also on the senior board. And it's been a privilege and an honor, really, to work with these people. Everybody is so accommodating, and we all want what's in the best interest of the senior center, and I couldn't be more pleased to serve with these individuals.
Jane, you should stand up so people can see you. Frank, too. So she had mentioned that, that we have two people. We have the, Frank actually represents the senior center board. He's the president, right? And then Jane is the director.
Executive Director.
Right. So we, when we meet, if we ever talk about the senior citizens endowment board, that's the four of us that, that will meet. But I just wanted to make sure that everybody knew who they were, so if anybody talks about you, we know who we're talking about.
And what can I like to say, Your Honor? My name's Jane Noldy, I'm the executive director at the Riverton Senior Center and Lander Senior Center. But we talked about operational costs, and it's my idea that it's not for operations, it's for maintaining the building, because the building belongs to the city, and so that's what that endowment fund should cover, not payroll or other normal operational costs. But I wanted to clarify that, because I don't want everyone thinking we're just floating that money on through.
Yeah, have extra money to, to play the slots with or something, right?
Right, right. So it is to maintain that building and keep it running. I mean, it's been going for twenty years, so things are getting older, you know, and so that, but investing it like we've done, I think has been great, because we're earning better interest, and we can use that interest. And then we've also had some other grants that have helped save money in the endowment. We didn't have to take utilities or something like that out of that endowment, so we've come a long ways.
You really have, and this is a, this is a wonderful opportunity for us to look at further future activities by getting an endowment set to it. And to lots of things, like the skate park, like splash pad, help, would really help us in the maintenance of that. Wish we had one for the airport.
Yeah, and that's, that's what was so great about this facility tax, is it was able to build a senior center in Lander, Riverton, buy a building and add-on in Chishonee, and then some additions in Dubois. So it's a huge, you know, benefit for the county.
You do a wonderful job, and we really do appreciate your efforts.
Thank you. Well, I have a great board that works with me, so.
You do.
Wonderful.
Thank you.
Do we have anything else?
Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate it. The selection of the airport engineering consultants, public works directors, report, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. The city of Riverton had a contract with JAviation engineers for the last five years to provide engineering services, project management services for all of the projects up at Riverton Regional Airport, and specifically for projects that require federal funding through the Airport Improvement Program. The five-year contract with JAviation expired in April, and so it was time to go out and select and solicit an engineering firm for our next five-year period. So staff put together advertisements and requests for qualifications for engineering firms, and on March twentieth, we began that advertising process. We advertised that in local and state papers, and then we also sent individual requests for qualifications to firms that are registered with the state of Wyoming Aeronautics Division. So any, any firm registered with them received a notice that we were soliciting interest. Statements of qualification were received on April twelfth, twenty nineteen, and we received three submittals. One from JAviation, one from, excuse me, MC Shaft and Associates, and Sage Engineering. A selection committee was put together to review these statements of qualification. This committee comprised of two city staff, one member of the city council, and two members of the airport board. Each member of the selection committee independently reviewed and rated these submittals of qualification. After compiling the ranking, and that ranking sheet was attached for your review, it was clear that JAviation was denoted as the most qualified firm to provide these services for Riverton Regional over the next five years. With that being said, staff recommends that the city council approve JAviation and direct staff to now negotiate a contract with them for the next five years for engineering services. And I did fail to mention that the airport board did consider this on April nineteenth, and unanimously motioned that the city council award this to JAviation. And with that, I will stand for any questions.
The chair would entertain a motion to approve the selection of JV Aviation, Inc. as the engineering. So moved.
Second.
Councilman Larson with the motion, and Councilman Rota with the second. Further discussion? Kyle, I have a question. Is, is Sage Engineering local, isn't Sage local here in Riverton and based out of Cody?
Your honor, they are based out of Cody. They previously had an office in Riverton, and I'm not sure if that's there anymore, but they are based out of Cody.
Okay, I was just glad to see that. In years gone by, we've had only one option, correct?
No. We had several last time.
Well, last time, but I, prior to that, we, we had only one that I remember bidders, and was JV Aviation. Can you tell us how long we've had JV Aviation?
Yes, Your Honor. JAviation has, in some shape or form, provided service to the airport for fifteen years. Staff that now comprise JAviation's senior team were with a previous firm for a while. The last time this contract was advertised, we did receive several submittals, and I know Sage submitted the last time as well alongside, I believe, Morrison Merrily and a few other firms. But JAviation does have an office in Jackson, Wyoming. They have offices, their main office is in Colorado, and then they have offices in Missouri and Utah and California as well. MCS or the Shaft Company, MC Shaft, they're based out of Nebraska.
I found it quite interesting, the, the way the totals came in, so I, I would agree with, with your selection, but I was, I was pleased to see that Sage was, was in there. Any further discussion? Kyle.
They're just apparently heads and shoulders above the competition. They are, I mean, we've had them for fifteen years, but there's a reason we've had them for fifteen years. The last time, we even tried to give it to somebody else, but the knowledge and the ability that they demonstrate is far superior than anybody else's.
Your honor, I would concur that they're a very qualified firm, and honestly, each of these three firms are very good firms.
Oh, yeah.
JAviation has provided great service to the airport for several years, and they ranked very high on this submittal process.
Yeah, twenty-three points higher, so I was just glad to see that Sage had that opportunity, so. Any other discussions?
Just a comment, I think it's impressive the way you did the rating system.
It's easy to understand. Thank you. No further discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion passes. Public hearing in consideration of ordinance number nineteen dash zero zero six, first reading prohibiting the feeding of certain animals. City administrators, report, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. At the council meeting on four-two of nineteen, council heard the presentation from the Game and Fish, and at the subsequent, we had an additional discussion, at which time council directed staff to prepare the proposed ordinance that is in front of you today. And once it is underway and passed, to proceed with a section fifty-six permit dealing with, specifically deer in this case. The item that you have before you, ordinance nineteen zero zero six, would amend Title Six of the Riverton Municipal Code, creating six-point-zero-four-zero-nine-zero. Without getting too far into the details, because you have the document in front of you, some of the important items here fall within the definitions, the prohibition and the exemptions of this ordinance. Definitions here talk about what it is to feed, to feed the animals that are denoted within the definitions. Their prohibition, or section B, discusses antelope, deer, elk, moose, turkey, ducks, non-domestic geese, bobcat, bear, mountain lion, coyote, fox, raccoon, wolf, and skunks. To be clear, yes, we've been talking about deer. This item was, these items were discussed previously about what we were going to use. We had denoted that we would use some of the formats that other communities had used, and as such, we have done so. Those definitions have been relatively consistent in some of the other examples that we have. However, council is, of course, able to add or subtract from that as they see fit. One of the largest caveats that we saw looking into this particular ordinance was, what, is this going to restrict normal gardening, normal agricultural use? Because to a great extent, we are an agricultural community. If we look in the exemption section or section C, you'll notice that regular agricultural work, gardens and the like, are exempt, are exempt from this. So if someone has a garden, they're not going to be thought to, to be feeding the animals, whether or not the animals get in there and eat the garden, it doesn't make them guilty of a violation of this. As such, we believe we've addressed reasonably the direct feeding of these animals for the intent of just feeding them, as opposed to having normal agricultural use, or even exempting bird feeding, which is not what we're talking about. You'll notice that the definitions and section six, C five, address that item in particular. With that being said, we have provided for the normal penalties and would recommend approval at this time. We would stand for any questions if you have them.
The chair would entertain a motion to open a public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Councilmember Borders is the motion, and the second is Councilmember Hancock. Tony has worked extremely hard on this ordinance and has accumulated the, the just of ordinances that have been sent to us from the Game and Fish. I think the exemptions are really important to, once again, put out there, the people that are engaged in gardening and ordinary raising of flowers and those types of things, this ordinance does not pertain to them. What we're trying to stop, and what the Game and Fish would like, is to make sure we try to stop, is the fact of people putting out apples and grain and salt blocks and, and things to draw animals to their location. Well done, Tony, I appreciate your efforts. If there's no further discussion, we'll go to vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. I now declare the public, public hearing open. The hearing will be conducted in accordance with state statutes and other applicable laws. I would ask those individuals wishing to address the council to approach the podium, identify yourself for the record. There being nobody wishing to speak, the chair would entertain a motion to close public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Councilman, Councilmember Hancock with the motion, second with Councilmember Rota. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. I declare the public hearing closed. The chair would entertain a motion to adopt ordinance number nineteen dash zero zero one on first reading.
So moved.
Councilmember Hancock is the motion.
Second.
Councilmember Borders is the second. Further discussion?
Your Honor.
Yes, Tim.
I happen to know that there's a lot of ducks that frequent down near Davis Lane. I know that people go out there and feed them. I'm not going to say whether I have engaged in such activities before. But I will say that this, this would be specifically making it so people couldn't go and feed wild ducks, right?
Your honor, that is correct. As this, as the definitions currently read, ducks are provided within there. However, if council sees fit, they can amend it to remove ducks, or any other item, or to add.
I mean, I get not feeding skunks, I really do. Deer, elk, moose, if you're, if you're feeding a moose around here, you're lucky. But I just feel like ducks, I do know that there are some wild ducks that go down there, people like to go and feed them. Whether that's a good idea or not, I know that, you know, people discourage you from feeding them red, feed them other things that are more healthy for ducks, but I just would think it would make sense just to remove ducks from that. I definitely agree with the rest of them. Please don't feed skunks in town. But ducks, I just, I don't know. I don't know that we need that as a prohibition.
Tony, can we not only, could we, could we eliminate location? Or do we have to eliminate the, you know, we could, we could have ducks being able to be fed at Davis Pond and even JC Park? Those are about our only ponds inside the city limits, are they? Am I missing any?
No, Your Honor, I believe, I believe that's about correct. The, I think it just, that's an interesting question, I hadn't thought of it. I think just looking at it off the cuff, that I could amend the language to say ducks other than at location one and location two.
Kyle?
Well, I, I, I'm wondering why we're making it so broad when the, the idea is to eliminate collisions with deer with cars. To my knowledge, we haven't hit too many ducks with cars lately, nor have we hit mountain lions, bears, elk, or any other, just deer. So I, I'm wondering why we're so inclusive on, on where the problem is, none of the above, it's deer.
Your honor, I believe I can speak to it to some extent.
Thank you.
Councilman, most of the time, the prohibition on feeding on animals on any particular ordinance has more to do with certain activity. In this case, we talk about deer because we're running into them with vehicles. That is the instigating, that, that is the incident which sets it for, sets it in motion. One of the things that you see with these ordinances, it takes similar, similar animals, i.e. antelope, deer, elk, and moose, in those cases, and say, well, yes, if we start feeding those and they start coming into town, they're probably, a moose hitting a truck causes a very large dent. And so that's how some of those get lumped in there. The reason that the other ones get lumped in there is because you have items such as bobcats, bear, mountain lion, coyote, predators and the like, and not wanting to have those in town or to attract them. Oddly enough, a lot of the time, they're attracted because their predators and the other species exist. However, a lot of the time, it has more to do with, I don't know who's feeding a mountain lion, I'm going to be honest. I don't know who got that in there, but at one point or another. But the idea of making sure that we're not promoting their presence within the community. So it becomes inclusive simply because it seeks to address multiple potential issues. However, as Councilman Hancock discusses, ducks may not be one of those items where you could see certain predatory animals or raccoons that carry disease and get in all kinds of trash bins and the like being nuisances. Ducks may not rise to that occasion. Larger animals that can cause damage to vi- Larger animals that can cause damage to vehicles tend to make the list.
Okay, again I say, can you tell me how many buffalo we've hit recently, or elk, or moose? And the answer is zero, so why include them? I understand that you shouldn't feed wild animals. That's clear and concise. But what you shouldn't be feeding is deer, and putting in salt liquor, apples, I mean, I would be all in favor of feeding the deer on the other side of the river, in the reservation, and move them over in that area and not, you know. When, when I moved here in 85, there were no deer population in Riverton. And the reason was because they were shot on the reservation. And if they escaped the reservation, they lived in Riverton. Because the reservation killed a lot of wild animals in the wintertime. They don't do that as much as they did in 1985. So my question is, why are we including such a broad list when our problem is one species and one species only? I mean, I haven't, I haven't seen turkeys in Riverton. Not, there might not be any, but, you know. And the number of raccoons, anyway, in case of rest.
Your Honor, I believe this, the short answer is an attempt to be proactive, and not have to come back and say, okay, well, in two years, we're, we're running into a whole lot of bobcats, and I'm sure that's not the first one we'd get to, but that was the-
Now, let's not, let's not forget reality. We have had to euthanize two bobcats in recent years, one up by Jackson School, and one down by Webbwood Road. And so, that is, Kyle, Kyle's correct. I have to stand and correct Kyle, there are no buffalo on this list, just like malt liquor. Don't, don't be throwing a buffalo in. So I think what we, what we ought to do, if you want to strike some of those, if you want to strike a turkey or a duck, that's really not where we're headed. This ordinance, in, to protect Tony a little bit, this, these ordinances are put together from other locations in the state. And, and they were put together in, if you don't think raccoons are a problem, I guess you don't live on my side of town. And raccoons are awfully cute when you get them in your hands, but they are terribly destructive to a garden. And I have video of, of a coyote on my property, on, on that side of town. So I have a fox, and, and so I do not have a wolf, and I, and I don't, fortunately, I smell skunks, but I don't have any pictures of them. And so I think that, I think the list is fairly inclusive. But if we want to eliminate ducks, that, that's a great idea. We have places where we feed ducks and people enjoy feeding ducks. So I think that's what this discussion is for. So if you want to make an amendment to the motion, we're at that point, so.
I'd move that we would amend this such to remove ducks as being prohibited from feeding them, and I'd also move non-domestic geese. I think if people wanted to feed the geese, I wouldn't have a problem with that either.
Now, let's be careful with geese, because geese are, look at our, look at Ryan Park, is, it will have in the winter, it'll have, what, Kyle, 200, 250 geese in Ryan Park?
Let's stick with ducks.
Okay.
Move to remove ducks from the list.
I, I don't have a problem with removing geese either, but geese do fly into Riverton fairly heavily. We have a motion, we have an amendment, correct?
Just.
Motion to amend.
Motion to amend, to strike ducks.
Do you still need a second?
We do need a second.
Second that.
Okay. So we have a motion by Councilman Hancock and a second by Councilwoman Borders, to amend ducks off the list. Can I call for a vote? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Motion passes. Well, any, any opposed? Motion passes. The, the amending of the motion passes. So now we're back to the, to the original motion, ordinance 19-001. Is there any other further discussion or any other motions that you'd like to, any other animals you'd like to prohibit?
Your Honor.
Yes.
Before you call for a vote, can I read it by title only?
Oh, why do you have to do that every time?
State statute, that's-
Would you please?
Yes, Your Honor. Proposed ordinance number 19-006 on first reading, an ordinance amending Title VI animals to revise Chapter 6.04 Animals Generally, to establish Section 6.04.090 supplemental feeding of certain wild animals, and repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith, and providing for an effective date.
Thank you, Kristen, I appreciate it. Sorry I ran past you.
It's okay.
So, is there any other amendments? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, say nay.
Here's what I found.
Sears picked up.
Okay.
Motion passive. We are now to reports and comments. Council reports. Carla, would you start for us?
Absolutely. I've got a few things to talk about tonight. I missed the Solutions Committee, last time they met, so I'll let Tim give me the report on that. My husband was nursing a, he got in a fight with our trash receptacle, yard waste container. I know. Yeah, funny. He was going to rake and he stepped on the lid and it flipped back, and it, it was ugly. So anyway, I missed the Solutions Committee. We talked about the Finance Committee tonight. One thing that I've been working on is, I've been working with the Riverton Local Food Hub, trying to help them get things off the ground. Some really neat things that they're trying to do. They went live with their website last week, and also the Facebook page. So we're trying to recruit people to come like the page, and, and more details to come. Another thing is, I went to the, it was the gathering of the Christian Motorcyclist Association. They had a barbecue in Thermopolis, and they presented me with this plaque. It says, "This plaque is presented to Riverton City Council in appreciation for your support of Wyoming's Veterans, Christian Motorcyclist Association, Wyoming Patriot Guard Riders. Thank you." And it's got the, the labels of all of the service branches.
Fabulous. Those kind of them.
And on the final note, I went to the Missing and Murdered Indigenous Women and Girls event on Sunday. Did the walk from the casino with my mom, and it was, I can't even describe how cool it was. It was just awe-inspiring to see all of those people come together for such a cause. We got to the park and, and it was great being there for the powwow. Councilmember Borders, Rota was there, along with Councilman Schatz, and it was just a great day. There was a lot of goodwill there that day, and it was just an amazing experience. And they are hoping to make this a yearly thing, so I'm looking forward to that also.
Thanks for showing up and representing us, we appreciate it. We appreciate the plaque. I don't know, where do you want to put that? Do they suggest, or maybe we can turn it over to Tony and find us a spot?
I'll find you a spot.
Appreciate that. That's awfully kind of them. Councilman Hancock?
Yes, Your Honor. I had a previous engagement on April 25th, so I didn't attend the Solutions Committee meeting either. I was sitting here hopefully, hoping that Councilwoman Borders could, you know, talk about it, and then I wouldn't have to admit that I missed it as well, but let me down.
Sorry.
I did want to talk about something else, though. I was, Councilwoman Borders was talking about the local food hub, and I was just looking at the Facebook page, and you'd engaged in a discussion with somebody who was complaining about the way that they're, they're stuck in that they cannot use a mobile food vendor in Riverton, Wyoming. And I didn't get on there and say this, and although I still might after this meeting, you can use a food truck in Riverton, Wyoming, or else we've got all these ones out there that are illegal. Just, what was this, last year, the year before last year, we had been discussing about how our process used to be, if you were going to have a food truck, or, or something like Phil's Dog Shack, or something like that, you had to go through a variance process in order to get that approved. And, and we are having people that were wanting to come here temporarily, and just have a food truck here for a short amount of time, and then move on. I know, for example, the, there's a fish and chips food truck, that they kind of go all around the state. And for situations like that, having to do a variance just seems like a ridiculous, long, complicated process. So I guess it would have been 2016? Is that when it was? Yes, 16? It's been longer than I thought it was.
No, it was in accordance with the eclipse.
Okay, that's right, because we were talking about the eclipse with it. So anyway, the whole point is, yes, 17, yeah. Anyway, the whole point is, you can have temporary merchants in Riverton, Wyoming. There's a permitting process, you have to fill out a form, you have to make sure that the city knows that you are a vendor, that you've got approval, if you're going to be selling food and that kind of thing, and you just pay a fee for a year, and you can have a food truck in Riverton. We're not walking around with a ton of illegal food trucks out there. So I just wanted to make sure that's clear, because I think in years past, whoever it was that was posting, has gotten their mind that somehow this isn't something that can be done. We are welcome to it. We use the process for vendors in City Park, or for events, when we have somebody who's a temporary merchant. So we are trying to do what we can to make this very welcoming and very possible for people to do that. And I just want to say, I think it's a great thing. And I encourage people, if they have something that they want to be selling, and they want to be doing it on other property, on commercial property without a building, you can do it. Just go get a permit. So, anyway, if there's any confusion about that, I wanted to alleviate that.
Mr. Mayor, can I ask just a question real quick on that? So when you apply for that permit, it lasts for a year, and you can come and go during that time? Is that, am I understanding that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
There's certain requirements, like you can't be parked in front of, like, a sidewalk.
Right.
I mean, that'd make no sense. Then you can't have moving traffic, you can't be in the middle of the street.
But the permit to be a traveling merchant in Riverton would last 365 days. Is that-
Is that correct?
No, it's not.
Eric, can you give us clarification?
We, when we discussed it, we talked about having food permits and entities that would get a permit from the parking lot that they were in, and the Sears guy, Zick, starts with a Z, he was wondering why he couldn't have and utilize his parking lot, rent that out. And that was allowed as long as he got, as long as it was permitted by the city to be in that location. So they can't be gypsies, they can't just move here and then there. They've got to be licensed for the state of Wyoming to collect property sales tax. And for you to say that everybody is for them is not true. Phil's Dog Shack is not for them. She ripped on me today for, she doesn't have wheels on, on that. And so she has one corner to be, and for those, she called them gypsies to come in and steal her clients, she felt that she wasn't represented. And she, she bit on me today to say something about that. But there is a process where that can be. So you can bring food trucks into Riverton, you can get them permitted, and it's, I think it was six months or a year, whatever it was.
It was for a year.
Yeah.
You could get it for a year.
Yeah.
But I guess the point is, is I think probably, and see, Phil's Dog Shack has been long enough that they had to go through the variance process.
Correct.
Rather than being able to do the permitting process.
Right.
But, but the point is, and I agree with you, maybe not everybody is for it. And, and I can understand that, if you're somebody who's gone through the variance process and has been kind of forced into having something that's more like a brick and mortar situation. But the reality is, when we were going through and we did this, it does leave it possible for people to do that. Whether everybody's for it or not.
Oh, yeah.
I'm for it. I think it's great to have other merchants that are here.
Let me reestablish order. Eric, would you give us clarification, please?
Yes, Your Honor. The permitting process is valid for one year, it is a $100 fee. I believe that was the question before the council.
So if we do have people that have vending units that want to use them, they do need to get a permit from your office.
Your Honor, that's correct.
And that, cost of that permit is $100 per year?
That is correct.
Thank you. Now, there is, Councilman Hancock, I believe is correct, there is some restrictions of where they can park that unit. Is that not correct?
Your Honor, that's correct. There's a 25-foot setback from the right-of-way line for not only the truck, but the vendors, the people frequenting the truck.
So do we have, when we encourage these to come to, say, City Park, the splash pad activity, do we make any exceptions to the fact that we line them up on the north side of the park and, and try to encourage as many to come as possible?
Currently, no.
Okay. So, I, and I think, I think both discussions are correct. We do have people that aren't fond of them, and we have people that are. But we have made amendments for all those, correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
Your Honor, I just have a question. When a person submits an application, do they have to specify the location where they're going to park, or can they move around?
Your Honor?
Yes.
Generally, they do specify a location, but it's vitally critical that they have the landowner's permission. The permit is valid for the entire city, so yes, they could move around. We do ask that they specify at least the first location. If they choose to move, then it's paramount that they have the landowner's permission, and meet the other requirements of the permitting.
Okay, thank you.
So Eric, am I right that they need to advise you of where they move to?
We prefer that, but it's not a stipulation of the permit.
Okay.
And I think it's important to note, they can do this on commercial property, so that's part of the whole thing. If it's going to be on city property, they actually have to have approval by the city council to do that. So if there's somebody that wants to be doing this at City Park or something like that, they can do that, but they have to come to the council. Somebody else who's doing like a food truck or something like that, they'd have to have permission, they'd have to have the setback requirements, have to have parking within a certain, available within a certain radius to, I think was what I had read. And they can do it on city property, but they have to come to the city council for that. But I just, you know, we did this with the eclipse in mind, but, I mean, since then, we've had a lot of food trucks that have been coming into the area that have been taking advantage of it too, so.
Eric, is that everything you'd like to add to that subject?
I have nothing further to add. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anything else that you'd like to? Corey, would you come from your end to us?
Mr. Mayor, so I as well attended the Missing and Murdered Indigenous Women and Girls March. I didn't attend the march, as I was setting up sound at the bandshell. We believe there was roughly two, maybe 300 people in attendance. The march started at 11 o'clock, they made it to City Park right about noon, and then they had a short rally where there was a couple speakers who were victims of said event. And after that, they did a out-of-the-norm powwow, so it was not normal to what you would normally see, from my understanding, but it was very well put together, very well received. So I applaud all the ladies that put that together. I did attend the Fremont County School District Recreation Board. We didn't really have anything too exciting happen there, so on that end, that is about all I have to report at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. In addition to that, Tony, weren't you also in attendance to that?
Yes, Your Honor, I was.
Yes, Your Honor, I was.
And we had quite a good attendance from the police department, I understand?
We did. Chief Murphy was there, we also had representatives from the Sheriff's Department were present. We had people walk in, officers walk in and out throughout the day, mingled in and out, you know, and then went on calls and others came back. So, we did, and we did have, we did have a really good showing of current, of current council and past council and board members from throughout. So, it was, it was a very positive event, well-attended. We worked with the, some of the organizers on the permit, and I guess what I would say for our staff is that they, Kyle and Captain Byerly especially, I'm glad he's here, worked really hard when they gave a late permit to do the march, to make sure that, well, if something was going to hold it up, it sure as heck wasn't going to be the city. They did a good job of reviewing it, making comments, getting changes, and it went off without a hitch. It really was well done. Sorry to...
Thanks, Tony, I appreciate it. Kyle?
I was there at the park, and that was a super-attended activity. That's what the park is for, for those activities. Second thing that I want to talk about was the groundbreaking out at the Eastern Shoshone Business Park. And that was very favorable there. Going to put in three roads, utilities, soft and hard, but the animosity that used to be wasn't there with the Eastern Shoshone tribe. They were very complimentary, I thought. They spoke of what was good for them being first here, us being second here, the county and Wyoming, and it appeared to me as a innocent bystander that they were fully behind helping Riverton grow, helping all of us, and they being the mechanism. And they spoke about being the, the owners of property that they were responsible for, good stewards. And it was, I thought it was probably one of the better groundbreakings I've ever been to. In addition to that, I thought the flag ceremony that they presented was outstanding.
I would agree. Anything else yet to add? Kyle, anything else I want to add? I would, I would like to, it's been a few weeks since we met, the hours late, and I would, I could go on for a few minutes, and I think I won't, but since Kyle brought the groundbreaking up, it was an exceptional activity. And whenever the flags presented, that, that's a touching opportunity for me, and, and the prayer that was said by their elder was, was fantastic. And the drums that were, that were used were, were fun to be there. So, one thing that I would like to mention that is, is new activity, on the 15th, Lander is having a, a further discussion on shoplifting, starts at 6 o'clock in the Lander chamber, and they're going to, we're going to move that into a discussion on opioid abuse. And we have a presentation that's going to take 15 to 30 minutes. And anyone that, that has need of that, we would appreciate your attendance there in Lander. That same meeting will take place in Riverton on the 22nd, at 6 o'clock in these chambers. And, and we have had a wonderful arrangement with these town meetings. And I really do appreciate everybody that attended, media coverage that we got, everything is, has been, I've been grateful for all of that. So, other highlights is, Tony's working really hard on an EPA call that we worked on. YO meetings are going great, the reconstruction of federal is, is really moving along well. There's just a lot of positive things. I got some good letters from the airport this week. We have the, the new committee for the city is, is underhand, and we wanted to, they wanted to push that through on this council meeting, but we'll do it in, in the, the next council meeting. And so, I just appreciate everybody's efforts. People are doing a wonderful job, and I, I think it's showing up. And with that said, I would like to tell our officers, I had a meeting with, with the sheriff, Ryan Lee, and he's 100% behind what our officers are, are doing, and we appreciate the effort that you're putting forth. And I would, I'd appreciate if you'd take that back to the guys and tell them, thanks a lot. We appreciate it.
Yes, Your Honor.
Other than that, let me fold down the page. Tony, you always speaking up. We'll give Tony a moment.
Thank you, Your Honor. I just have a couple small items and one item for you to consider as a possible motion. You received an email earlier tonight, we're test-driving a new agenda software. This was something that Kristin and Megan were demoing earlier in the week, and I got invited to it, and we had the opportunity to take our existing agenda and use it in a different format, which is what you have now. This has the possibility of being very useful to us, not only as a time saver, but also in the development of the agenda. Not to go too far into it, but a lot of the time when we put it together and we use the PDF format, if somebody changes something, like I came forward, say, hey, 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 I know you're just finishing it, but you've just finished it, but hey, can you add and change this? Well, we have to start back over and start redoing that entire packet a little bit when we put it together. It's not the end of the world, but it's time-consuming. Furthermore, it actually, actually restricts to some extent the people who can work on it. In this case, not really the case. And it provides links to all of the information. We're going to be using this over the next month, we would like you to take a look at it as an agenda management item. So, we hope that you can give us some feedback with that over the next, I think we have another two meetings. And so, we'd love to hear your feedback on that. It's relatively inexpensive as far as software packages go for specific use, and it is a month-to-month item, not a, hey, buy it for five years. So, it might be something we look at as a bridge until we get into a more advanced DRP system in the coming years. But we would love to hear input on it as it comes.
The beauty of it is, is we're going through the agenda, agenda items, and somebody skips somebody, like I would never do that. You can touch on the, the highlighted underneath it, and it brings up those, those pages. And so, it's a little bit quicker than what we do right now.
So, there will be a public portal, also. One of the items that we're talking about is a public portal, so anybody in the public can be sitting there on their phone, I did it when we were demoing on my phone, and they just follow along, okay, this is what we're doing here, okay, that's, read it, okay, go to the next one, just the same way you're doing on yours. They have the option to. So, it could be very useful for us, as we, we want to be open with our information, and that, that's useful. You'll notice the splash pad mural is underway, so if you see people with a projector in the park at night, they're supposed to be there, they're not having movie night, but they've been working and they got, they have that going in there, so that's, that's pretty neat. We've had some neat pictures of that on YO...
OT.
YOT. And they did some pictures of that. We're looking forward to getting that going, it's looking nice. Keeping in mind that May 24th, as we discussed, is the opening of the splash pad. There is a public, this is information for the public, the mayor and a number of others have had conversations with regard to Athon Energy, that's a big, that's a big business in our community. Their EIS, which is Environmental Impact Study, is being published and is out for comment right now. They will be having a public hearing at CWC, 5:30 PM on the 20th. That's an item, that has a lot of impact to our community. Usually, we don't mention private, private enterprise quite in the same way, but as it's such a large item, and EISs are so all-encompassing in terms of economic development, economic activity, and energy exploration within a community, it's probably worth it for individuals within our community to take a look at that if they have a chance.
Is Tony, is, is that the 4,000 wells between Shoshone and...
It's not 4,000 wells, Kyle, but it's, it's a large number, maybe 2,000 if they, if they got their way. And we could be looking at anywhere from 200 to 250 jobs. And it's, and it's halfway, it's, it's in, the production site is in Fremont County, but it's about halfway to Casper or Riverton. But we're doing everything we can to get that, those permits to stand, and we need all of the public help that we can get to come out in support of that.
How many jobs, did you say, Your Mayor?
Possibly 200 to 250.
So, what's our multiplier on that, Tony?
In terms of revenue, in terms of tax revenue, in terms...
Well, every job outside allows other jobs to exist. So, if you've got 200, normally your multiplier is, that allows an additional so many jobs to be around, to support those primary jobs. It's like when we bring minerals out of the ground, somebody has to supply the shovels to dig the mineral out of the ground. That supplies jobs.
Last, last year, Athon paid $34 million in taxes and royalties to the state of Wyoming. They have currently, they had 43 jobs, and they've pared that back to 30-some, and they were pulling all of their facilities and going back to Texas. And if we can get things going, the field's available and, and it could grow, the problem is the price of gas is in the tank. But we need the permits and we need, we need people to go out and to support their, their existence and the existence of those permits, so that we can, we can pull those minerals out. If we had those additional jobs, you're right, Kyle, it would be, it would be amazing what we could get for Riverton. In house sales, in all sorts of...
Well, revenue, tax revenues, food, Walmart, clothing. So, what, say that again, when is this environmental impact statement dealing, going forth?
It's, currently it's published, they're going to have a public meeting, a public hearing at CWC at 5:30 PM on the 20th.
Do you know the room number?
I do not, Your Honor. I can, I can find it out.
Okay. The same meeting is happening when we're in session in Thermopolis, and I'd like to be to both of those meetings, or have representative from the city of Riverton to Thermopolis to speak to that. And that would be on the 21st, the next night, at 5:30 again.
And Councilman Larson, I, I think I know the question you're asking is, what is the multiplier? If we have 200 jobs, how many additional? The number 1.7 sticks in my head, but I don't think that's right. But I, I think I can find out.
Yeah.
I know, I, I think I know the question you're asking now. And every job they do have does mean other jobs that they carry with them and other family members. So, Your Honor, the, we did have YOPASS, which is Wyoming Planning Association, had their, had a training and gathering here last week, so we were well-attended, it was put on, our staff attended, we were able to provide the welcome for that, they were out at the Reach Foundation, they've been here, I think, two years in a row. They were here last year, weren't they?
That's correct.
So, they had their last two here. That's, that's just nice that this is a place where they, where everybody can come and centrally locate, and, and it's a sellable item to say that we're centrally located. We're really happy to have them here. And Your Honor, the last thing I have is that the WAM, we had discussed previously at the last meeting, that WAM Summer Convention is June 12th, 13th, and 14th, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, like it is, it's always on a Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. We do need a representative, a voting representative and alternate. Doesn't mean the alternate necessarily has to go, but if the primary person doesn't, we would hope that that person would be able to. It is a three-day trip, it is to Sheridan. So, with that being said, if council had somebody that they wanted to appoint as a voting delegate, that would be desirable at this point.
I will be in attendance to the meeting, so if, if that's all right, I can, I can vote. And we could have another delegate, another council person chosen as a, as a fallback in case a garbage can attacks me or something.
Who else is attending? Is anyone else going to Sheridan?
Tony could surely do that. He's a Sheridan boy from way back.
They even let me visit sometimes.
Do they?
Most of the, most of the warrants are gone, it's been a few enough years, they're still not looking for him, so.
We'd need a motion on that, then, Mayor?
Tony, do we need a motion?
Your Honor, I think that would be cleanness is to motion for a voting delegate and alternate.
The Chair...
I move we have Mayor Guard as our voting delegate, Mr. Tolsted as our alternate for the WAM Summer Convention.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilman Hancock and a second from Councilman Larson on the WAM voting delegate. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. We do have an executive session. The Chair would entertain a motion to convene into executive session for the purpose of personnel, considering the appointment of, the appointment, employment, right to practice, dismissal, complaint, or charges against public officer, professional, person, or an employee in accordance with the Wyoming State Statute 16-4-405A2, and for the purpose of considering offers, tenured wages, salaries, benefits, or terms of employment during negotiations in accordance with Wyoming Statute 16-4-405AX.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Larson, second by Councilman Rota. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion passes, we stand adjourned into executive session at 9:06. The Chair would entertain a motion to reconvene into regular session.
So moved.
Second.
Councilman Larson with the motion, second. Councilman Hancock, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Oh, excuse me.
Sorry.
The motion, the motion passes. The regular session of the Riverton City Council is now reconvened at 9:52. Do we need any action?
No, Your Honor.
Thank you. The Chair would entertain a motion to adjourn regular council meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Hancock, second by Borders. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, Kyle, say. We stand adjourned for the Riverton City Council at 9:43, or 9:53.